Everybody. Welcome, everybody. I'd like to call to order the Town and McCandless Meeting of Town Council for September twenty fifth. Um, twenty twenty-three. Uh, now I have a friend in the audience, Bridget. You want to come on up? We're just gonna help us with the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right.
Come on up if everyone could join Bridget and I. We'll come on this side.
Pledge of Allegiance to the black. I love you, United States of America. And children of the Constitution stand. I am a God. In this world, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Bridget. All right, we got a lot to go over tonight. Um, first up. Uh, how we conduct these meetings, uh, we will work together to better our town. We all have an equal voice. We may disagree. But we will do so with civility and respect because in the end, we are all neighbors. Uh, announcements, um. Sad news is one of our neighbors. Um, I'm sad to announce the passing of a U C C board member. David. Biteri, uh, he served on the board since twenty eighteen. Uh, we appreciate his efforts. Uh, deepest condolences uh to his family and friends. He will be missed. Uh, next up, the Environmental Activities Committee. We have a rain guard and a workshop. Held at the Heritage Culture Center on the twenty-eighth and October fifth. From six thirty until dark. Uh, the Heritage Culture Center is also hosting. Trolley Trails through the North Hills on September twenty-sixth at five and seven. Registration is required and may be be done so online.
Maybe two more.
Therefore, okay. Um, the fall roadside cleanups will take place October fourteenth and twenty-first. At eight thirty A M. Registration is required and may be done online. We'd love. For added volunteers there. Okay, um, first, we have two public hearings. Uh, the first one uh is for Resolution number thirteen of twenty twenty-three series approving the transfer of restaurant liquor license. Number R ninety-six thirty-nine into the Town of McCandless from the municipality of Verona. Mister Corble, are you online?
I am.
Could you? Do the public hearing for us?
Uh, yes, I would be happy to, um. So at at this point, uh, we'll call to order uh the public hearing on the transfer of the liquor license as uh referenced by President Taro. Um. Uh, at this point, we would ask uh the applicant to come forward if they're present. Is the applicant present?
Yes.
They could come forward and make our presentation to council?
Yeah. Name, sir?
Uh, my name is Mo. Oh, yeah. So. So it's uh for our restaurant next. The Shabu Shabu Hapa restaurant. So I think a lot of people they didn't hear about here here for us. Before it's a totally new new restaurant would be in the in in the in the in 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 this. In in here. So Shabu Shabu Hapa is like a main. So it's a buffet style all you can eat. So we have a lot of uh meat seafoods noodles and veggies and all the people. They can take all all the all the stuff from buffet and then they will order the soup base first. They they can they can cook it inside the the soup base. So that means uh that means all the people need to make it. They are cooking on the table. And uh we have a few week can cook it wise cooking inside the soup. I'm going to get like table tables tables. Tables, tables.
Tableside.
Yeah, table size. Well. Now. Now, uh, we also we also sell. The. Two C as well. And uh. Uh, for the the the. Because a lot of customer was asking this uh is 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 much better if we can sell sell. You know. The. Beer alcohol drinks come with the food is make it all the tastes kind of will be. A lot better if we sell like alcohol. We have a lot of. A lot of location in a. Next. Next, 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 next. Next bill. So but all the all the sale of the alcohol is not a lot. It's only like a. Four, five, four, five percent of the total sales. So no reason we we are uh asked for it. Getting a liquor license just uh because uh uh if if people. Eating with the uh come with the uh alcohol is make all the foods. Make it. Uh, can 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 even more even much even taste. Taste a lot, a lot of, a a lot of. Better. So that's why we are we are with. That's why we are try to. Try with the. Um, the liquor liquor. The. The. The license here.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Okay, are there any questions or comments for the applicant um by members of council?
Any up here, Dr. Rock?
I see that you're going to make sure that you have alcohol risk management training in place.
Yes.
That would be for all your staff?
Uh, for all our management teams first.
Servers?
Yeah, let's serve to uh who whoever can herself the beer. So they all all gonna have the. Or 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 need to be like a have the. Training, yeah.
Pretty sure that's a state requirement.
Yes, yes.
Anything else, Dr. Rock?
Sure, thank you.
Anything else from council question?
No, good luck.
No, nothing.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Okay, if it is, then we would ask if there are any comments um from the members of the public. On this application. For liquor license transfer.
Being none, Mister Corble.
Okay, if uh if there are none, then uh we can close the hearing and uh and and move on.
Thank you. Want to take a next.
There's another uh here.
That more than Christian.
I got this one.
Okay.
All right.
There for this.
Good evening. Tonight, we are having a continuing. I'm sorry, this is. Yes, we don't need any more recording.
Thank you.
So tonight, we have a continuation of the budget update that happened in July. This is the housekeeping item to amend the budget for twenty twenty-three. Related generally to things like grant awards and um unexpected purchases. That were necessary for twenty twenty-three. So you have before you on the screen, the. Budget amendment for twenty twenty-three that includes for the general fund. Um, in order to compensate for some of the expenditures, we looked at some of the revenues as well. Um, we are anticipating additional revenues and interest because. Um, post-budget approval in twenty twenty-two. The interest rates climbed significantly, and so I'm anticipating another hundred thousand dollars above what I initially originally estimated for budget for interest income. Um, the recycling grant didn't come in as expected, and so I'd like to reduce that by thirty. What you don't see on the screen because it's the same line item under Act five eleven taxes. As discussed in previously previously previous months, sorry, previous month's reports. The R T T or Real Estate Transfer Tax is performing below as expected because of interest rates again rising. And so I would like to net that against. Um, an over abundance, over budget of. Earned income tax, which is E I T. Both of those are five eleven taxes, and so that'll be netted. Um, but it is something that I will do for your future reports so that you can see um a little bit more as anticipated. Towards the end of the year. I still believe that we'll make budget with E I T. With that increase. And I hope to make the R T T budget with that reduction. Um. For general government down below. Um, we had with the passing of the zoning ordinance, we have an increased um publication fee for that. As well as. Some other incidental items. We have in public safety, the outfitting for the cars this year was a little bit more than anticipated. And then what you'll see on a future agenda item this evening. We are hoping to purchase a car uh truck uh for the parks program uh through Public Works. We will be using. Snow and ice money that's extra from this year because we had such a mild winter from January to March. So that net effect is roughly seventy grand. If you then continuing on to C I P, it's a little bit more significant. We received the two grants. Um. The Arley Grant roughly four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then the local share grant. For half a million for the H V A C and window improvements here at Town Hall. Those were not initially budgeted because they had not been awarded by budget time of last year. So we will be adding those. Again, interest income is expected to proceed better than expected. Which would reduce what we need to transfer from prior year fund balance, which is great. Uh, because that can be used in future years towards other improvements. Um, what you're seeing down below is the. Roughly three hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we're adding to the culvert program. Um, as previously discussed when we passed that contract. And some other incidental items for things like the. H V A C system as well as some overruns in some of the sidewalks. So. Both very minor. Again, these are mainly housekeeping items. And I'd just like to get them out of the way before we go into the twenty twenty-four budget cycle. So I'm happy to open the floor for public comment.
Anyone from the public have any? Comments or questions? Seeing none, any or from counsel? Seeing none. Mister Corble still there? Do we have? Did we have to close this?
Yeah, yes, we should close the, yes. So if there are no more comments, then the the hearing on this opposed ordinance is closed.
Very good. Thank you, Mister Corble.
Sure.
Okay. Up next, uh, public comment on agenda items only. Uh, if anyone here has a public comment. Come on up to the microphone, uh, name and address and uh. Forrest, for yours, yours for five minutes.
Yeah. Evening. How how are you tonight? Uh, my name's Don Huber. Um, my address is twenty-one. Eighty-one Ben Franklin Drive, uh, Philip Ward. Uh, thanks for the opportunity to speak on an ordinance that you're going to review tonight. On um the parking of commercial vehicles on residential streets. Have a number of our neighbors here this evening. Uh, and I also have in my hand a petition signed by sixty. Residents, McCandless residents in Franklin time, which represents a little bit over sixty percent of the McCandless residents. That signed this in support of this uh this ordinance that you're going to review tonight. Um. I read it just very briefly. Um. We are concerned about the commercial vehicles that are being parked permanently and overnight and places and during the day. In our neighborhood. Which endangers the welfare and the safety of our children because they ride their bikes around it. They have to get around these big. Large commercial vehicles. We're talking very large. Commercial vehicles. It also blocks the sightlines. For cars that are coming in and out residential and non non uh commercial vehicles in our neighborhood. We can't see around these trucks. And has also caused some problems with busing. Because the school buses have to move around it sometimes and they can't. They have to drive around. And. Also, our first responders might have a problem. Uh, McCandless Franklin Park ambulance might have a hard time getting around some of these vehicles for uh for a call. And as a result, we feel that we need to restrict commercial vehicles. From residential streets. And uh I can present this petition. I know we'd like this, but uh.
Sure. Think it's more weird.
Oh, we're good.
You're right. Um.
But other townships have this. Ross Township has a an ordinance, I believe. Hopewell does. City of Pittsburgh, of course. Uh, we just ask for you to review it and understand that this isn't just our neighborhood. It's throughout the whole town of McCandless. So I don't know if you have any questions, but we have other people here and I'm not sure if anybody wants to speak on us tonight, uh. Neighbors that are directly impacted by it.
So I guess first, does anybody have any questions, Mister Huber?
I I mean, I'll just make a comment. I know we we've spoken about this, Don. Um, you know, it's not a just to your neighborhood. I've seen in other areas of my work too. So we hear what you're saying. You know, we appreciate uh the support of your. Um, supporting it as well, and you know, we'll review it here later tonight.
Good, thank you.
Don, when you say commercial vehicle, is it is like a like a truck for work or is it like an R V or like what 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 are what are the? What what are you seeing in your neighborhood?
Jason, Jason has pictures. These are very large. We have, we have somebody that runs a uh landscaping business out of their house and they have these large. Root, not R Vs, bigger than R Vs. That are huge. They're big, long trucks and they park in front of um. Houses. They make it egress from other neighbors trying to get out of their driveway difficult. And I don't know how to describe it. They're huge.
Yeah, I mean, there there's commercial vehicles from the pictures I've seen. It's not just a pickup truck necessarily.
No, no, it's not pickup.
It's a large stake bed truck and trailers and.
Trailers.
Commercial vehicles.
One trailer that's as long as this room. And uh it's we I I'm concerned mostly about the children. It's they want to play and they want to ride their bikes and they can't see around these things and. Someone's gonna get hurt. I hate to say, I I hate to say that. It's true, but. Thank you for your time. I don't know if anybody else wants to say anything from our neighborhood, but thank you very much for listening. I appreciate it very much. And it's nice seeing Mister Dell here tonight, too.
Thank you, Mister.
Good condition to our our conscience.
Is there anyone else in the public that would like to? Provide comments on agenda items tonight? Seeing none? Very good. Okay. Uh, next up, the meeting minutes from our August twenty-eighth meeting were uh provided in the packet to everyone on council. Does anybody have any edits or revisions to those?
I'll make a motion to approve uh the meeting of Town Council minutes for August twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Second.
Second, Doctor Rock. Everyone in favor?
Hi, hi.
Hi. Any opposed? Mission carries? Okay, committee records. Doctor Robert, can you take us through the public safety community?
Yes, thank you. Um, start with staff reports, Chief Hawk. Uh, first, I want to compliment you guys for. The community day. Support there, the officer K nine, sorry, is that who you say here? Sorry.
I've been told it's Sir Ali.
Sir Ali.
Thank you, Doc. Yeah, you we couldn't have done it without you, though.
Oh, he was, he was good officer. He did his due diligence.
Sure did. Yep.
Would you like to?
Uh, I know it's a long night. Any questions, folks? You got my, you see my report there. I don't want to. I could rap about uh training and everything for way too long.
Okay, were we involved at all on the Ross Township uh? Hotel there where they had. People get sick, go to the hospital?
No.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Yes.
You were.
One.
Sorry, the medics were, yeah.
Okay.
Uh. But uh other than training and stuff, uh. I know, I don't know, Mister Paul, do you do you want an update on the Grubs Road thing? From a month, a couple of months ago? I can speak to that real quick.
Is that the supposed home invasion?
Right.
Please.
I would. The short and sweet of that one is we never did get that individual I D. This was a an individual that was seen on a a camera in a house. Walking into a garage and in a basement. Area. Probably more of a trespass situation than a burglary from the little bit we have. If even a trespass, we never did get an identity. Despite putting it on social media and giving it to the local news media. Uh, we did have a. Uh. Delivery person in the area said that they saw, they believe they saw an individual matching that description, jump into a vehicle and leave the area. I didn't get a description on that vehicle, though, so isolated incident, we believe. One home, we're talking about. A month or two removed, so I don't believe there's any concern for any public safety. We're going to continue to keep that case open and try to identify that person, but up to this point, we don't have an I D. Unfortunately. But also fortunately, nobody was injured. Nothing appears to have been taken.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. The fire marshal report for the month. Was in.
Mister.
Online?
Yeah.
I am, Doctor Ripa.
Well, is there anything you'd like to add? We all have your reports. I see we're still collecting money for. Calls out the.
Yeah, yeah, that's still ongoing. Uh, nothing to add to the report other than. Um, I want to cordially invite all the council to our twenty-third annual uh firefighter appreciation banquet. Hopefully you've received your invites, whether that be email or hand-delivered in person. But um, appreciate if um any of you can make it. Um, it's you and a guest. Uh, invited like last year. It's at the Chadwick. On uh Saturday, November eighteenth starts at six o'clock. If you do not receive your invitation, please just let me know and I'll make sure I get you the information. Other than that, that's all I got.
One more question, Jeff. Um, how far along are we with the strategic plan?
So the plan was um submitted uh at the end of August to Mister O'Malley. So at that point, I'm gonna have to defer to Mister O'Malley.
So I'm gonna reach out to uh Ed asked you guys a couple of weeks ago, but I was gonna reach out and try to schedule over the next two weeks. Uh, two, two by twos with the consultant. Uh, so we can review it um. And create the final report that gets submitted to the public and to the fire departments.
Okay, thank you, Jeff.
You're welcome.
Those in the public, two by twos, meaning Brian just sits down with two members at a time, makes it a little more. Eat a little easier to digest.
Okay, moving on, building permit reports for the month. Uh, you all have it in your packet. They seem to be pretty standard. Nothing seems to be standing out. Any questions on those? Okay, liaison reports, uh Personnel Board. This is why.
Uh, the meeting minutes are in your packet. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Okay, uh, one other thing I wanted to put down like a building permits. We have a new building code official. Uh, Mister David Fitz Henry. He started in September. I think it was September fourth. He couldn't make it tonight, but at the next meeting, we will recognize him. Okay, volunteer firefighters, uh Steering Committee, Mrs. Eisenberg.
We had no meeting this month.
Thank you. Any public comment on public safety? No questions? Thank you, and. Go over to facilities report, Mr. Senator.
Uh, so reported facilities management, the staff report for Public Works was in your packet. Um, are there any questions? Uh, pending no questions, uh, we can move on to liaison reports. Environmental Advisory Committee, Jack Casey.
The notes are in your packet. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Pending no questions, keep things rolling along here. Um, the Ad-Hoc Technology Committee, there was no meeting. Is there anything to add?
Just that we have a new bid. We had bid for.
We're still processing through the um the I T and expect to have some recommendations to council in October. Any questions for Doctor Roberts? Okay, uh, next is Stormwater Management Ad-Hoc Committee. Um, I believe the minutes came out later today. You did see them. Are there any questions for myself?
Very, very pleased with how direction that's going.
Making great strides. Uh, pending no other questions on that, are there any public comments on facilities management? Pending no comments, I yield to Ms. Clunin, who may not be available right now. Um. Trish, are you there?
No, she's getting popped up.
She's here. I'm asking her about me.
Do you want me to run through it there?
Hi there, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Are you able to hear me?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I'm in very win. Windy rainy County Galway. Thank you for um.
You're good.
Getting me in here today.
Oh, alright.
Um, well. So uh we will move on to the reports of the Services Committee. Um. Starting with um, I just have, I'm sorry, my agenda here. With the McCandless Township Sanitary Authority and Mister Casey.
Last meeting minutes are in your packet. If you have any questions, Bill's here.
Thank you, Mister Casey. Um, and. Moving on to McCandless Franklin Park Ambulance Authority. Uh, there was a large packet. There's a large set of minutes in your packet, and I saw that Chief Dell was in the audience there. If there are any further questions, maybe Chief Dell may be available to answer.
Yeah, we'll give him the floor.
Thank you very much. Joined by our board member, uh, Mister Youngblood as well. So uh, it's said in our business that that quality E M S doesn't happen by accident, right? So certainly does, nor does a successful organizations. When I stood here last year around the same time, uh, I very much stood here representing an organization that was quite frankly struggling uh to buy to survive. We had a request for two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars worth of funding. Uh, I'm pleased to report that, you know, we've been very aggressive over the past year in making numerous administrative operational changes, all of which have certainly impacted our bottom line very positively. Uh, for that reason, you know, I'm able to come this evening and present it to you over the weekend. A packet with a formula uh that demonstrates our financial need at this point. For ongoing operations, right, is really to uh to to help fund our own balance, if you will, uh of the hundred sixty-one thousand dollars. So that's a change of about seventy thousand dollars worth of a request. Uh, our request largely at this point basically comes down to about thirteen dollars and thirty-six cents per household. Uh, and we respond to about nine thousand calls a year. Seventy-five percent of the call volume that we respond to throughout municipalities we serve. Happens in McCandless, right? So it's not uncommon at any given time uh to have an ambulance, you know, on a call in McCandless. Hmm, probably about, you know, thirteen times a day, you know, so we keep very busy with all types of calls. Uh, our request, that formula is on page seven of the packet that I gave you this evening. Uh, and again, it was in the packet that I delivered uh over the weekend. Um. We are asking for your strongest consideration, you know, for your assistance. With this request. We believe, you know, that what McCandless Franklin Park, McCandless does uh will largely kind of impact what the rest of municipalities do. Uh, as well with respect to our funding request. Um, we are working hard. To provide quality care to the residents and visitors of the municipality day in, day out. I say we do it about thirteen, fourteen times a day. Um, and we really need, you know, the support of the of the municipality. And I think our formula that we just added. A little complaints, but it is that we are are why we need that. Um, and uh I'm happy to answer any questions that you folks might have. I didn't want to spend a lot of time walking through all of the things that are in this package. Uh, I think personally, the work that we do speaks for itself. Uh, many of you've had an opportunity to be over at the station. You can over on. Uh, a number of different times in the year, we had an open house. Uh, so you you can see that the improvements that we're making. I think the last point that I'd like to make is that, you know, when you look at the McCandless budget, it it shows about ninety-five thousand dollars for the E M S. Um, please understand that last year eighty thousand of that went towards fuel and maintenance of our vehicles. All of which we paid back. Yeah, so it's not an eighty thousand dollar donation to the organization or anything to that effect. We really effectively get zero dollars from the municipality. The other fif- fifteen thousand dollars that was the ninety-five was made up of funding that was uh set aside by the municipality for additional consulting. On top of the consulting that was uh done, um, you know, on behalf of the municipality. So again, I just don't want it to be confused as if we are getting funding. We're not. We're at zero. We've taken our zero to two thirty-five. We've taken our two thirty-five to one sixty-one, thirteen dollars a household, and we really need your assistance. Any questions?
I I'll make a comment. I'm the alternate liaison. Um, you know, I've attended the last couple of meetings, as is Trish has. And it's an organization that's on the up and up. I mean, they're they're doing everything they can. Uh, being fiercely responsible. And uh really making great strides. I I challenged them, I think, a year ago about what are you doing with grants, and they've chased a lot of grants. So I just. You know, want to say they are. Doing very good things over there and uh. The services you provide are phenomenal. Thank you.
Are your subscriptions up at all?
Now, our subscription rate is about eight, the subscription response rate is about eighteen percent and yeah, so yeah, so it's they're not up. So, you know, yeah, it's a, they're about uh fifteen percent. So, you know, yeah, it's uh, they're about uh, fifteen percent, you know, if we do collectively throughout the five municipalities. McCandless is the best uh, of, of all the responses. There's also more people, uh, but the bottom line is we collect eighteen percent of, of the population participates in the subscription program.
I have the subscription card on my desk at home. First of all, I want to thank you because you've been in my house twice this year, and thank you.
You're welcome.
And um. I don't see the levels. I didn't mail it because I'm looking for those levels.
There's two levels, uh, there's an individual and there's a household.
Right, but isn't there other levels?
There are none.
And there used to be?
I can't answer.
You know, like where you gave five hundred dollars, you became something.
That was a diff- that's a different program. It's our capital fund program. Uh, we won't mail that out again until, I believe, like January, February of twenty twenty-four.
Okay, so you're just looking for ninety dollars?
These are, yeah, this is the residential subscription.
Okay, and then the other one comes.
That's a donation.
Okay, I couldn't figure that out. I kept looking online for it. Thank you.
Gotcha.
And thank you again for the work you did.
My pleasure.
Anything else? Chief, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
The thirteen thirty-six per household, that's across, that's standard across all municipalities.
It is.
Then. Would this be, would this be a decrease in funding for Franklin Park?
It is a decrease.
What are they?
Because we were asking for two thirty-five from them, from you guys last year, we're asking for one sixty-one. Last year, they were asked for one hundred five thousand five hundred, which they gave. Uh, this year, I believe they're being asked for seventy-two thousand.
Okay, so it's gone from one oh five.
It is a decrease in asking. It's a decrease in ask for all of the municipalities.
Yeah. Okay, then. Miss Greathouse, we give some in-kind. Items to. So is that included in this one? So if you could describe them and then Chris, you tell us if that's. I imagine I know the answer. It's not in that number.
You know the answer, but.
So the ninety-five thousand he mentioned previously, there are welcome items associated with that ninety-five thousand dollars expense. It is in way of vehicle mechanic at a reduced cost through our shop, it's fuel at a reduced cost through our pumps. Um, it's also, um, but we do give in-kind services that are included in our franchise agreements, so they receive um, cable and. Some of the other.
Landscape, that's not a franchise.
Through our public works group, um, they help with some of the plowing and lawn mowing, et cetera, throughout the year. Um, but they had taken on a lot of that over time.
So basically, we're helping our neighbor.
Yeah.
Upkeep their property and help them maintain their vehicle, but not anything above.
We provide or just pump for their administrative staff.
Yeah, volunteers, and we have about five volunteers, right? So I, I just don't want to make that seem like that's a large expense that is taking on. We are grateful that we're able to purchase the fuel at a discounted rate. It's the same rate that you're paying. We're, we're obviously with respect to the, the vehicle maintenance, you have mechanics that are there, they do an amazing job. We're happy that, that we're able to lean on those folks for that. I, I think we can talk about in-kind services all day. I think we're onto it. Outlay and cash into the organization to support the operations is zero, and, and I don't know how else to say that, you know, that's, that's really what it is.
You kind of made my point for me.
I appreciate it, yeah. I appreciate you.
Basically, it's. We're getting next.
Yeah.
For all intents and purposes, zero.
I would agree with that.
Yeah, yeah, you're looking for that.
And we are, and we are also appreciative of the public works and, and cutting the grass, but like, I don't want to ever seem ungrateful for anything like that, um, you know.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Chief.
Another thing, like, I know other places, people get bibles when they use an ambulance. Um, we don't get a bill for a subscriber or we.
You don't get a bill if you're a subscriber, right?
But if, yeah, if you weren't a subscriber, you would get a bill.
You would get a bill.
Because they have pretty significant bills. That some friends of mine have done.
Sure.
Okay, so that's how it works here. Thank you.
But your health insurance could potentially pay that bill, but I'm not understanding.
Oftentimes they pay, you know.
And they pay.
Sometimes you're, sometimes fifty percent, sixty percent. Seldom does any insurance fail.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Chief Dell. Thank you, uh, and we'll now move on to the Northland Library, uh, Mr. Singer, please.
Uh, the minutes are in your packet. If there are any questions, please add. No questions here. Trish.
Hey, seeing it, seeing no questions, uh, any comments from the public?
We have two.
Not seeing anyone stand up? Oh, okay.
Yeah, we have, I have two here, Trish, so we'll do them one at a time here.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Sure.
Sir, name and address?
Greg Polanski, twenty-three sixteen Ben Franklin Drive. I, uh. Want to support. The request from the ambulance authority. Uh. It was about eight years ago. Uh, but ten days after my wife had spinal surgery, she fell down the steps. Uh, I think she tripped on her robe as she was going upstairs to get dressed. She broke her right wrist. The orbital bone over her right eye. And to her vertebrae. The ambulance kicked quickly. And very efficiently. Got her to, uh, press me, uh. And it's kind of emotional for me because that was the beginning of like a one-year stay for her in hospital facilities. But I can only commend. The action of the EMTs, uh, they were very efficient, very good. Uh, and. I don't know that she would be alive today if it wasn't for uh, what they did in getting her started in terms of uh, her medical care. Uh. I have to admit that we're not a subscriber. But we've donated for years and continue to donate, and in fact, we uh. Just worked to get the check cut today for this year's donation, so I wholeheartedly support the, the ambulance authority and encourage council to uh, give them whatever they need. Thank you.
Thank you, great, good comments and sharing your family's story with us.
Thank you, sir.
We have one more, Trish.
Thank you.
We, Martin, one oh five eight Five Grubbs Road. I, I, I still can't believe that we have never given um, a portion of our budget to the ambulance service. And I urge you to, this is an amazing, my husband and I have been over to visit. It is a wonderful, wonderful place, and they do wonderful work. So please make sure that they get at least what they're asking for, if not more. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Any other public comment?
Thank you, Ms. Martin.
I don't see anyone else, Trish.
Thank you. Uh, if there's no further comment, this concludes the services committee.
Mr. Casey, would you like to take us through administration and finance?
Hey, Ms. Greathouse, would you like to help us out here with the checklisting as well as the dashboard?
Yes, you have the checklist thing in your packet. If anyone has any questions, I'm.
There's no questions?
I'll make a motion to approve checklist in number eight dated August first, two thousand twenty-three to August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. Totaling one million eight hundred and seven thousand eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars and twelve cents. I submitted each member of council and posted on the bulletin board and town website. Second, second, Mr. Casey, everyone in favor, signified by saying aye. Aye, can I, is there any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Everyone left, there's, this isn't like boring, it's like all this boring stuff.
I want to listen to the finances, you know, so the uh, second item on the agenda that I have for you this evening is the financial dashboard for the month, eight months ending August thirty-first. Um, you can see on the screen that we are performing with in budget consistent with prior year. And the only thing I will mention is that you see the additional expenditure number. That is because we have been doing a progressive transfer of the uh, to the CIP fund, the Capital Improvements Program Fund. Uh, from the uh, general fund rather than doing it in one fail swoop as we've done in past years. So um, which we normally did in November, so you'll see a little bit of difference in expenditures from now through then. Um, we are using li- liquid fuels money currently for capital projects because we're doing the road program. As I mentioned, through the budget amendment, we'll have additional grant revenues to help support those, so um. I think we're in good shape going through the end of the year. Anyone has any questions on the financial report? I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Ms.
Thank you very much.
Mr. O'Malley, would you like to give the.
Thank you.
Patients report?
Uh, yes, communications report was in your packet, put together by John Bergarsky. Uh, if you have any questions, please let me know, I'll do my best answer.
Thank you. Liaison report. Dr. Rappa?
Uh, the L I D A, we did not have a meeting.
Thank you. President Tar, how about North Hills Council of Governments?
No meeting, Mr. Casey.
Thank you. We have any public comment on administration and finance committee items? Okay, thank you. With that, I'll turn it over there. Ms. Eisenberg?
Thank you. RJ. Staff reports, planning.
Hello, hello. I know we've got a long one, so I'll keep it brief, even though I've got a pretty lengthy section on this rezoning request that we first started discussing um, at the planning commission meeting this month. Um, you all will get to hear much more about this rezoning request at the public hearing, which will be held on October twenty-third. Um, next month, we're talking about it at, well, by next month, I mean next week, but you know, we're, we're talking about it again at the planning commission, and they'll be issuing a recommendation, yea or nay. Um, the short version is at the corner of People's Road and Knoll Street. There are two parcels that kind of make up the corner. Um, it's very odd configuration where you've got sort of an L on the interior, it's got frontage on both Knoll Street and um, People's Road, that is zoned as a mixed-use commercial parcel, but the parcel at the corner, which is owned by the same person, is zoned as moderate density residential. Um, so in an effort to find a buyer for these properties, uh, they are requesting to change the parcel at the corner from RM to MN, which is the neighborhood center, sort of the walkable scale, um, mixed use. And the proposal for the potential buyer, um, is a two-story office building that would contain his dental practice as well as, you know, potentially some other rented-out tenants. Um, so. Again, there's a lot more detail on kind of the character, the discussion that the planning commission had and the particulars of, of this parcel configuration um, in the written report. Happy to take any questions at this stage, although again, this will be coming for a full public hearing um, next month. Okay, um, the only other thing I have on here is just an update on the temporary uses amendment. Which you all, I believe, heard at the last meeting, yeah, it was our last meeting, completely the one at the end of August. Um, that was the ordinance that you all voted to put in pending status. Um, and that was just cleaning up some things about temporary uses, uh, sort of focusing those regulations a little more, making them a little more detailed where they needed to be um, after the zoning update. So we had a good discussion at the planning commission. Overall, the amendment was well received. They had a couple of questions, comments, things that we reviewed with the town attorney's office and with our zoning consultant. Um, and next week at our meeting, we will have one of our representatives from the town attorney's office to kind of discuss their recommendations, whether they think we should tweak anything or not. Um, based on that, and then again, they will be making a recommending vote, yea or nay um, to all of you at their meeting next week, and that will also be coming for a public hearing on October twenty-third, so. Sorry, I'm hitting you with a couple more public hearings, two, two meetings in a row, but um. That one is, you know, moving through the process while none of the comments were really anything particularly substantial, just kind of, you know, thinking things through and clarifying. Um, like I said, it was, it was a good discussion, so um, that's what we've got coming up. It's just both of those agenda items for next week's meeting, um, continued discussion for both of those, so. Um, one other note, we, I believe, our zoning hearing board um, application deadline for October was today, and we did not receive any zoning or zoning variance applications, which means that this is the first time that I've been here, and we have not had a zoning hearing board meeting twice in a row. Um, so if we're wondering if the new code is working, there's your evidence. I don't know that we've ever skipped more than one in a year since I've been here, so doing good on that front. Any, any questions?
That's good. That saves time and money. That's why we invested in the rewrite of the code.
Yes, save, saves us time and money and saves residents time and money because they don't have to sit through a meeting and pay us a couple hundred bucks just to say, yeah, you can have your porch where we all thought it was fine to have a porch in the first place, so, yep.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next liaison reports, planning commission, Jason?
I think OJ summarized everything very well. If there's any questions, please let me know.
Zoning hearing board, Trish? Zoning hearing board, as we said, there was no meeting this month. Thank you. There was no meeting. Okay.
Public comments on planning and zoning committee items. Do we have any public comment? Anything from council? Having heard none, I'll turn it over to Ms. Weiger, recreation.
Hey, liaison reports, first up, activities advisor committee. Um, I'd like to point out and thank everyone who's involved in making McCandless Day such a success this year, so. Then we have Winter Fest coming up on December ninth. Any questions, comments? Nope. Uh, next up, we have the finance development professional committee for the Heritage Center, and that's Mary Ann.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I do have a couple uh, important items to report. Uh, Chairwoman Lococif has resigned. We want to thank her publicly for her efforts and her time and hard work that she's given us for years. What she's done for the Heritage Center and what she's done for the town in general. I will take note of the um, movies and the flea market especially, which was a lot of fun. So we wish her well. I got a chance to say goodbye to her and uh. I hope we see her in another capacity sometime around the time. The election of the new chairperson of the F D P C had took place, and Mr. Joe Wall was elected chairman unanimously. Mr. Ironman was elected. Vice chair. Is that right? No, Mr. Coin. Sorry, there's a bunch of stuff here. Mr. Coin was uh, nominated and elected as vice chair unanimously. The Mikey Missile Site event and the drive-in movie were successful. Everyone was thanked for their effort on Community Day. Vice Chairman Coin reported that the H C A P day at the Heinz History Center went very well. Uh, our chair, Chair Taral announced that the trolley trails is sold out. It is, both sessions are sold out. There's a total of ninety people attending this. The upcoming schedule for volunteers has been mostly set in place. And. Chairman Wall reported that Franklin Park will be having a municipal display of artifacts. And that the Pasan Foundation has committed to donate twenty-five hundred to the gala, and the North Allegheny School District will print the programs free for the gala. For those of you that don't know about the gala, it's the Shining Star Gala on uh, the Saturday night of Thanksgiving weekend. The uh, electronic sign is working. I think we're going to talk about that a little bit later, right? And Mr. Wall has also been elected president of the newly reorganized Federal One Two Three McCandless Community Association. Congratulations on both.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Okay, are there any public comments on recreation committee items? Nope, I turn it over to Mike.
Okay, uh, town manager reports?
Town manager's report was uh, in your packet and sent to you today. Uh, if you have any questions, please let me know.
Any questions from council? Amen. Uh, engineers report?
Now, the engineers report was also in your packets, and we have uh, Kelly from Gateway here today, if you have any questions regarding any of the topics in that report.
Any questions from council?
No.
Okay. Very good. Town attorneys report, I bet I know what I'm gonna hear.
Well, my report was also in the packet, and if we want to discuss any of it, happy to have an executive session with council to do so.
Thank you, Mr. Corbals. Hope you're feeling better. Can we talk this? Uh, okay, moving on to whole business. Uh, we had interviews for a junior council member. Um. Who did that, I think?
Uh, Carolyn and I did. I'd like to make a motion to appoint two, actually. Uh, Carson Corona and Yuki Chen as junior council members for the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Second.
Okay, before we, but do we need to agree that we want more than one? Is that, is that, Steve, is that anything we need to do, or is there anything formal we need to do? We want to point to, we're allowed to point to.
No, I think it's, it's inherent in the motion of appointing two.
Well, I did it, okay. I just want to make sure we're doing.
No worries.
Okay. Uh, motion's on the table. Everyone in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay.
Aye.
Okay. Welcome junior council members. Will you reach out to them and?
We will take care of them.
Thank you. Very good. Uh, okay, new business. Uh, I think we heard from some residents about overnight parking ordinance, and there was one as a draft that was included in our uh in our packet. Um, so I'm sure everyone looked it over. I don't know, maybe we'll just go down the line if anybody has any questions. It will start at, at my left here. Carolyn, any comments or concerns or anything about this or questions?
So I guess my, one of my kind of comments is, I just want to make sure that if there's a resident who happens to, this is just an example that happened this last past week. Um, they had a boat, a neighbor had a boat up at Lake Latonka, and they had to bring it down here for storage, but because the driveway's so steep, they parked their car trailer, everything out in front of their car. But I think it was like two, so they can get it uh towed to where they would store it. I just want to make sure situations like this are not gonna be docked or, you know, have any issues.
Okay. I think there's a seventy-two hour note somewhere, but that's more for RVs. Oh, it says boats too. Okay.
Just to make sure.
I saw that in seventy-two hours.
Yeah, seventy-two hours is what I read as well.
Okay. Anything else, Karen?
No, that's it.
No, Dr. Rappa, do you have any?
I think it's well-written. I like it.
I'll save mine for last, Mr. Singer.
I, I mean, I think, uh, obviously, I, we had residents here this evening from my ward, uh, speak about it. Um, it's not only been in that uh neighborhood, but I've had it in my neighborhood. Um, constituents complain about it. It, it's something that I think needs addressed. Um, you know, it's what's being proposed here, I think, is a good ordinance to get started on. It's not so um restrictive that we're not being flexible with it. There, there's, there's a lot of flexibility in it to allow for those situations. I think it's necessary to put something on the books, and I think this is a good start. As anything we do here, it can always be amended and changed.
I do have one question. What about like I know in my ward, they have been grandfathered. Will this take precedent over that?
Grandfathers for what?
Uh, for example, there's one, one street part of Haught, they all have three in a row, RVs, and they're big RVs.
And they park on the street.
They're in their driveways, but.
Yeah.
Yes.
You know, just so I can answer this too, we're still doing this with staff for to make sure that it puts, everything kind of mixes well with our current zoning ordinance we just passed. So I would say a lot of this conversation was that if we move it off the street, let's talk about where they go. But there's a lot of extra stuff in this kind of draft that was thrown on. Um, but I think what overall we're trying to address is in the street parking. Um, I don't believe that there's probably any additional rules we have to put in place for, for parking in your own driveway that isn't already handled properly in our zoning. Yeah, this is just street-focused as far as I see. And I, and again, same both neighborhoods in my ward, I've had issues with RVs on the streets, commercial vehicles on the streets. This is a hot topic. And I understand, I'm in a, a more densely, not saying that you aren't either, but my neighborhood's more densely narrow streets. Lots of houses. It has become more and more of an issue. So that's all I have.
I actually agree with Mr. Singer. I think this is a good start. Uh, Mr. Huber, I believe his name was, brought up a lot of really good points, but he didn't bring up one point that's near and dear to me, and that is the salt trucks. You know, they hit cars or they have to go around cars, and then, and then when the car finally moves, there's a big block of ice there in the middle of the road that causes a problem for the next car. So I, I think it is a good start. I want us to take a look at what we can do to maybe help our Department of Public Works going forward with uh at least winter. Uh, but, and there's also lots of situations where people park cars in the same spot, month in, month out. And I have a problem with that. I'd, I'd like to see if there's a workaround for that as well. So.
So the cars won't be in this one. This is just.
Right, I understand. I'm just saying, dude, it's a good start.
Yeah, I, I totally agree. I don't understand how school buses get past this stuff. The thing he was describing sounded immense.
It is.
And, and to the point of the, the boat in the, in our street, our HOA has rules against that, but I mean, they knew that they didn't have anywhere to put it. And, you know, she they have, they texted a bunch of people saying, we're moving it, we're moving it. So, I mean, I don't have a problem with something like that that's very temporary, but when people park gigantic things, we don't have that problem, I don't think, but in our neighborhood. But that would have to be terrible, a great big thing parked all the time. Are you, are you allowed to do that? Have that kind of, right now, you're allowed to do that?
Yes.
There's nothing against that right now.
You can run like a whole business out of your house with great big trucks.
Parking on the street.
What happened is people who used to live there, either had passed away or moved, and now you have new people in, and they don't like and they're starting to question it.
Yeah, for me, it's the safety thing. I've, you know, constantly I've had, they'll call the N A bus superintendent to come out, and they have to go knock on the door and get them to move their vehicle so the bus can get by. It's, it's a problem in our neighborhoods.
Yeah, it's a problem, of course, on both sides of the street for the buses. I mean, you can't park directly like this and get a bus through.
Right.
Uh, the residential street, so I can't even imagine how they get through. You know what will happen? They'll rewrite the bus, and then everybody will be really unhappy. So I think this is the least we can do.
So we want to do it for every, all commercial, RVs, boats, trailers, that, that's what sort of, we're sort of yeah, leaning towards.
Yep.
Um, I don't know if you have, if I could support the uh the permit part of it. Um, I
We can, we can talk about that more later, but.
Yeah, it just seems like a I don't know, you start unnecessary, but an added burden to fill up paperwork, come file it here because they want to you know, park their RV in their backyard.
I think.
Yeah, internal discussions, how that works with our police department, our plan department.
You, you get sort of where, yes, yeah, yeah, you get sort of where, uh, I'm coming. So. Okay. Um, so the next steps here. Internal staff will look at it. You'll take the comments of all of us.
Yes.
And then.
Put together a, a job to bring to.
Well, yeah.
You guys, sometimes not. Let me make one more comment. I'm sure you already know it, but since it will be off-hours away that the police can enforce it.
It might. So we have, yeah, we have a couple things for all the regulations for RVs. Um, it can screen.
Perfect, thank you.
I would also say in communities that I've worked in that that's better handled by the twenty-four-seven department. Yeah, I just want to make sure we're, keep that aware. That's all.
Okay. Uh, any last comments on the overnight parking? Probably. Okay, very good. Uh, next up, this uh Trish.
So quickly, this is a housekeeping item. We do this annually. Annually, the actuaries review our three pension plans. We have the police pension plan, which is a defined benefit plan. I need to clarify that for the wordage in the agenda as well as the non-uniform pension plan, which is a very old pension plan that only still has one participant in it that we um are just maintaining at this point, as well as the town's um money purchase plan. And so the actuary prepares the two thousand twenty-four anticipated contribution, and the governing body needs to acknowledge the receipt of those three estimates for payments so that the town manager can sign them and they can be filed with the state. Um, so that's what's happening tonight. The amounts that were arrived at for two thousand twenty-four are consistent with prior years. You may have seen that in the analytic that was provided in the packet. I also provided the three um MMOs, which is the minimum municipal obligation for the pension plans. Um, if anyone has any questions on these three items, I'm happy to address them. Um, but your acknowledgement and tonight will help um to allow Brian to sign these and for us to send these off tomorrow. Any questions?
Anyone, council? No?
You'll see these in the two thousand twenty-four budget. Thank you.
Okay. Or something for motion, anyone? Choose.
I'll make the motion. Uh, motion to, the town has received its minimum municipal obligation for its police and phased-on non-uniform defined contribution pension plan and money purchase plan.
Second, second for Dr. Rock.
Second.
Everyone in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Okay. Next up, you want to tee this one up, Brian?
This is the um the public hearing that took place earlier for the transfer of the restaurant liquor license. Um, this is the resolution we have to pass to approve that transfer. So I'll make a motion to adopt tentatively identified resolution number thirteen of the two thousand twenty-three series approving the transfer of restaurant liquor license number R dash nine six three nine into the town of McCandless from the municipality of Verona.
Second.
Okay, second one, Ms. Swiger. Um, everyone in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Aye.
Here, gentlemen. Okay. Next up, is this a Trisha one?
Right.
And Brian, you need a new truck?
Yes, uh, one of the, the pickup that we use mostly for our parks department essentially um that also is used, we plow our small parking lots at our parks, municipal building, McCandless Franklin Park Ambulance Authority. Uh, unfortunately, uh, was a little bit more rusty than we expected when we went to inspection this summer. And uh, the best option was to purchase a new one a little bit earlier than we expected, uh, but because it's over my purchasing threshold, wanted to bring it to council for.
And this is the one that was offset was because we spent less on salt. We can invest in equipment. Yeah. Okay, not to mention that salt ruined the last. Circulating.
I'm circle like. I, I'm your uh public works liaison. It's, this is a necessary evil for them. Um, they need this. Um, it, it does a lot of stuff. You know, and we're working with public works to get a timeline of budget for replacements. Unfortunately, this one came up sooner than that is, so it's definitely something they need over there.
I'll make the motion. Motion to approve a purchase of a two thousand twenty-three Ford F two fifty pickup with plow and equipment in the amount of sixty-three thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars from Walson Wind Ford Incorporated through Coast Stars, contract number twenty-five E twenty-two four oh one.
Second.
Second, Ms. Swiger. Uh, everyone in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Here, moving along. Uh, the next is the police, this is just housekeeping, say the list we have, we're just gonna.
Right, yeah.
It's essentially a six-month extension of our current police list.
Do you mean, read the motion? Okay. Motion to approve the extension of the town of McCandless police eligibility list to March twenty-six, twenty twenty-four.
Second, okay, second, Mr. Casey. Uh, everyone in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Uh, personnel board, uh, rules and regulations are included in your packet. Is there anybody that has question?
Well, changes.
The ma- majority of the stuff was just cleanup.
Yeah.
Uh, the only question I ask is we and it's not a major question because it allows it either way. As alternate members, um, it seemed like they were more important when we had a board of three. Um, and now I question, is it a necessity to have alternate members for the board of five? But I do make that statement with a, the way it's written is it's not actually a requirement. Counsel can choose not to appoint alternate member. So I'm fine with that as it is. But I think it's, council should think about whether or not we have to actually appoint someone as an alternate pending that we have five on there already. So I just wanted to make that statement.
And that's something that could be addressed down the road, you know?
Yeah, like I said, I'm not worried about it, but I just look at the long term. We have lots of boards and authorities to appoint people to.
Yep.
That one in particular, I, I take nothing away from someone who wants to volunteer, but if they volunteer for three or four years and are never actually you know, participating in it in a sense because it's not necessary, that's just something to think of. I think it was more important with the board of three, when you had absences or issues in a board of five, I think it's very less necessary, but something for us to put down the road.
Yeah. Uh, scores up for motion at some other.
I'll read the motion. Motion to adopt the personnel board ru- rules and regulations. Second.
Second, that's right. Everyone. Okay, everyone in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Uh, next up, color display for the Heritage Center. Um,
I'll make the motion. Motion to approve requests for color display on the Heritage and Cultural Center sign.
Second.
Okay. Uh, everyone in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay. Uh, I want to tee this one up, Brian.
Oh, yes, this is the um part of our four-year pollution reduction projects, pollution reduction plans that we have to do. Uh, one of them that we had scheduled this year was the Little Pine Creek Restoration Project. It is down by the M T S A um plant that is uh off of Longview. And we went to bid and received um a couple of bids with the lowest bidder being Sea Crump uh, with an amount that is under the expected budget. I'll make a motion to adopt the contract for the Little Pine Creek Restoration Project to Sea Crump Inc. in the base amount of a hundred and thirty-five thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
Okay, second, Ms. Swiger. Uh, everyone in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Um, any? Any opposed? No, okay. It carries. Uh, the next who's best, it's really just the release of the, the bond. Are we releasing twenty-five grand or the one sixty-six?
The, the twenty-five.
The twenty-five?
Yeah, the one sixty-six had to be posted to release.
Okay, one sixty-six is the amount of the, the bond.
The maintenance bond. So we're releasing the performance bond.
Twenty-five.
Like for the project, and then we'll take the maintenance bond in case anything fails.
So I'll make a motion to approve the release of the Gecko Performance Bond in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars. All technical comments and punchless requirements have been satisfied for the town engineers slated September eleventh two thousand twenty-three, and an eighteen-month maintenance bond of a hundred and sixty-six thousand six hundred and twenty-nine dollars and thirty cents has been posted.
Second.
Second, Mr. Casey. Um, everyone in favor of this motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Um, next is the housekeeping agenda.
Yes, there's a, a few state roads that the town takes care of, um, and they pay us a per mile uh weight for lay mile. And uh, our contracts, they usually are three years. Uh, we had to renew it this year, and so we have to pass a resolution to continue that.
Who gets to set the rates?
And that sets up. I, and I'd just like to make a, a comment here, you know, when you first go in, you're like, you know, why, why are we taking care of PennDOT roads? But understand, it's a service to our residents. Um, you know, we're a more local um municipality who can better handle it in a timely manner.
Yeah.
If we result in all those roads um up to PennDOT, it could take a long time. So
yeah, we want to just know.
I, I just want people to know to understand why. It's, it's important that, you know, we do do that.
That's a very accurate statement.
It is. Trust me, I, I asked the question, and I understand it more than ever.
Working collaboratively with other parks.
So I'll make a motion to adopt the tentatively identified resolution number fourteen of the two thousand twenty-three series to authorize the signing of the PennDOT winter maintenance agreement.
Second, second, Mr. Casey. Everyone in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? No, okay. Motion carries. Uh, and the last, this one, Brian, it's just uh, it's just sort of housekeeping to appoint David as our building code official.
Yes, as a municipality, we have to appoint a building code official. Um, we can also appoint a code officer. Uh, this is uh something we've already taken care of, but council needs to ratify.
I like the motion. Motion to ratify David Fitz Henry as building code official and code officer.
Second.
Okay, second, Ms. Swiger. Um, everyone in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? No. Okay. Motion carries. Uh, ambulance authority has a resignation. Um,
A motion to accept resignation of Tyler McCart- McCardle from McCandless Franklin Park Ambulance Authority, effective immediately.
Second.
Okay, second, Dr. Rappa. Everyone in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Just a quick comment, Tyler was a, a great add to the ambulance authority, was a um volunteer firefighter as well for people. So it's a, a he's moving on to uh bigger and better things, but a, a loss for McCandless.
Yes, Tyler, thank you for your.
Thank you. I was going to uh repeat Mr. Singer's remarks there, if I may. Um, Dr. McCardle was here with us for a short. Repeat Mister Singer's remarks there, if I may. Um, Dr. McCardle was here with us for a short time, but he was a. A great asset to our community in both the ambulance authority, the fire hall, and as a medical professional, and he will definitely be missed.
We are done.
Um.
That's right.
Move in second. We're good, right? I, I, I totally lost my, okay. Everyone in favor, signify by saying aye. Okay.
Aye.
Okay, anyone opposed? No, okay, motion carries. And the last, uh, uh, another resignation.
I'll do that too. Motion to accept resignation of Abby Locosse from Finan- the Financial Development and Promotional Committee. For the Heritage and Cultural Center, effective immediately.
Second.
Second.
I'll make another comment here. Again, thank you, Abby, for all of her hard work. Um, she really helped, uh, bring that. Uh, organization in that building, you know, from where it was to where it is now. So we really appreciate all of her efforts.
She's a consummate professional.
I'll, I'll second and third that. Yeah, I guess there, the two leaders over there really transformed. Uh, that department, that organization over the past couple of years, and their leadership has really made it what it is today, so. It's sorry to see, uh, Abby go, but hopefully she can join us in another capacity down, down. So. Um.
I agree.
Cause I keep interrupting you after the second. I'm trying to get it before the.
Everyone in favor, signify by saying aye. Any of them? Okay.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, last, is there any public non-agenda item comments? If you have those, pop on up, name address, five minutes.
I will make a quick agenda related.
Kelly Harrington from Gateway Engineers. Um, I just wanted to make a note under new business, um, item H. The total for the base amount is one hundred and thirty-four thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. Um, per the recommendation letter on the twenty-first, um, the agenda did say one thirty-five, nine, five, zero, so I just wanted to make that clarification. I apologize for not catching it on the front side of everything.
So, Mister Corbels, do we need to redo that one, or because it, we, we, because we approved more, we're okay?
Exactly, we're okay.
Good to hear, cause I would have forgotten if we voted or not. Any other public non-agenda comments? Seeing none, okay. Thank you.